I'll now call this regular meeting of the Jacksonville City Council to order. Folks, I appreciate everyone who's come out tonight and all those that are watching the meeting on G-10. To begin with, I'm going to ask you to rise for a pledge of allegiance led by Council Member Logan Sosa, followed by the invocation.
A pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Heavenly Father, we pause once again to acknowledge your presence and to give you thanks. Thanks for this day and for all the blessings that you bestow upon our city and upon each of us individually. We pray this evening for our children, for their teachers, the bus drivers, and for all who will be associated with getting our children educated during this upcoming school year. We pray that it will be a safe school year. We pray that they will excel in their studies, and we pray that future leaders will be rising up out of this class and classes that go on. We pray for our military who's serving us here and around the world, for their safety and for their anxious families. And as always, we pray for our mayor and for our council, that your guidance and direction would be with them. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Council, we've all gotten a copy of the proposed agenda for tonight's speech, and hopefully everybody's had an opportunity to review it. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Here are not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Next, we have our first section of public comment for this evening, and I will call each person that has signed up for this. Do you have a preference for the microphone?
I believe I have.
Okay, this one over here. Okay. All right, I'll go in order on this. There's three minutes is the limit that you can speak tonight. That's the council's rule. And at this time, I'll ask Carmen Spicer, if you'll come forward. Give your name and address, please, to the clerk. Ms. Spicer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Carmen Kunt Spicer. My address is 59 Kerr Street, Jacksonville, North Carolina, 28540. One of the reasons that I am before you this evening, Council, is because I had the opportunity to observe, as a citizen, the introductory to DEI. And I thought it went well. I thought the facilitators did well, and I was glad that you all were there. By my observation, as we know with DEI, diversity, equity, inclusion, it means pretty much that this is a melting pot, that everybody is included and everybody should get a fair share. I don't want to stand before you being accusatory and saying that things has been done some way of intentionally, but when we know things could be a little bit better, and when we walk into the room and see, does the room look like us, a melting pot, then it tells us this, that maybe we still have some work to do. My question is before council, is that shall we continue this process? Do we think it's going to be good for us and good for our city, one city, one community, one love? Onslow County, the greatest county of all counties, because I was born here, so I'm kind of a little partial to Onslow County and Jacksonville, but I do know this, I know we can do better. And I think we all have to take accountability. What have we done? Can it be better? So that's what I say to you. I appeal to council, mayor, let's continue to do this. Let's continue to make sure everybody is inclusive and no one is above another, because I know we all are believers and we have faith. So thank you so much. Have a blessed evening.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jonathan Popkin.
I'm coming to represent Booty Town Furniture. Talk about New Bridge Street. Obviously, we know the city has had tremendous issue with Warlick Street in that area. It's now been closed for eight months. That is considered a road closure. You might want to talk to Mr. Carter about what that means, but I need the city to really get this done and get it finished. I think it's beyond ridiculousness. Everything that's been going on, I've raised my concerns to staff, but I wanted to say this in front of everybody, that it's on notice. And there's a lot of businesses downtown that are scared to come talk to you. They've had damages. I've had considerable damages. I've been here 70 years. My family's been downtown for 70 years and made it through storms, wars, everything imaginable, floods, but it may not make it through this. So I'm asking you, for the last time in a very nice way, to let's get this done. I don't want excuses. I don't need a workshop. I don't need any more meetings. I need action. And there's months that went by where it sat down there, and we've got months more to go through. So I need you guys, I'm imploring it to get done. And before I finish, I'm trying to make this as short and sweet as I can, no finger pointing like my cousin, you know, that what really aggravates people within the city is you make rules and regulations, yet the city doesn't abide by those. So an example I'm going to use is the storm order. Your storm order has God knows how many violations up and down New Bridge Street. I'm pretty sure you don't even have a permit for where you're storing your stuff. I can't let it sprinkle on some property I've developed, and I've got a notice coming. So I just want to express the frustration that everybody has, and that's all I got to say, so I hope you would get on it.
Daniel Sterling. Please give your name and address to the clerk, please.
My name is Daniel Sterling. I'm at 382 West Francis Street, Jacksonville 28546. You have a write-up on your desk, something I wrote up in June. I had a car land in my lawn from a speeding accident, and it came within five feet of me and my dog. I had come to the police station, I came to City Hall, I even tried to get my ward, elected official, Mr. Bitner, involved when I felt the runaround multiple, multiple times by this city. I needed some answers that the speed bumps weren't put back in on the street that was repaved in my area, and I kept getting runaround. I got pissed. I wanted to speak with Mr. Bitner. I needed my elected official's direction, guidance, and help. I couldn't get a hold of him. There's one phone number, one email. The email is for all of you as a group. I wanted his email so I could then inform him. What I did get was I got Rose. She changed everything. She got the chief of police, the chief of fire, she got chief of safety, she got this stuff together. I now have blinky speed signs on my street. That also I was misled that there was going to be data uploaded from those, so then we can have the patrol coming around when the need was for speeders. Turns out that wasn't on there. So when I get lied to once, fine. Twice, three, four, five, six times, I'm done. So now, I can't give enough attaboys to Ms. Marsh Byrne, her city clerk. I don't know, she runs this town. She made it happen. Also, there's Lieutenant Philip Williams. He was actually in my driveway the other day, putting up the actual counter for the speed times that they can take the data. Turns out it doesn't work, but he called me on it. I'm impressed. You all need to go shake these people's hands. This is a neighborhood over there in Pytonwood Downs that's growing. The property values have tripled since 2018, which I bought. It was 50,000, now they're 154,000. This city has really impressed me. I'm from San Diego. I was at Camp Pendleton in Oceanside. I was Navy there. I came here to retire. So I just have to say in my last five seconds, thank you for your time, and I do have the write-up in front of you of what did happen. Thank you.
Reverend Leander Milton.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Reverend Leander Milton. My address is 60, my current address, is 6608 Chatham Park Drive in Brandywine, Maryland, 20613. I come before you tonight thankful to the city manager and his team for the work they begun to do in our community of Georgetown. Thank you, Mr. Ray. As early as yesterday, some other of your teammates were over there doing some inspection of the ditches and the drainage areas, so I'm grateful for that. Thank you. I would just ask that we would kind of focus a little bit more now on the roads, as I told you earlier. Because of the heavy equipment that's traversing the community daily now because of the construction that is going on, the roads are not able to handle that. So we need some attention to our roads, and we need it like last year. So we need some attention to the roads. We also are grateful for the bus stop that you guys put there, but it's just a stop. We need an overhead covering with some seating when clement weather. You know lately, we've been having a lot of storms here in the city and in the county. We don't want the residents of Georgetown standing at a bus stop uncovered. We need a covering there and some seating. And I also owe you, I owe you, Mr. Ray, some streets where I know that we need more lighting. I will get that to you tomorrow. I'm here for about a week, so I'll get on to work on that, and I'll get that to you. But I just want us to continue to work together. I like the attention that we're giving our community. I just want us to be like more focused and more directed, especially when it comes to the roads. If you were over there last week, you may have seen some of the heavy equipment that's going back in there, because they're starting to build now. I don't want us to wait until the community is overcrowded and then we start putting things in there. No, no, no. We want the bus stopping those things done now because they're needed now. The roads are in need and in need to be repaired now, not later on when we get more residents in the community, because it's coming. We talked about it. There's something out there saying there's going to be like 320 houses backing on the water. You put 300 more houses in that community with the roads we have now, it's just a disaster waiting to happen. So please, let's put a little focus on the roads, and I'll get you all those streets that are in need of more lighting, okay? Thank you.
Next, we have the adoption of the minutes from the special meeting that was held on July 25, 2024, and workshop meeting from August 7, 2024. We also have five consent items. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adopt the minutes and the consent items.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Here are not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Let's go down to item number six on the agenda. This is voluntary satellite annexation of Jim Parker Road. And Mr. Massey, you're going to be presenting this item, our deputy city manager. This is a 40.87 plus or minus acres that are being voluntarily annexed into the city.
Mayor and council, on behalf of B&amp;M Developers, Tidewater Associates has submitted a petition for a voluntary satellite annexation of three tracks of land totaling 40-plus acres that are not contiguous to the current city limit boundaries. The property is located off Jim Parker Road, and the developer proposes to build 392 single-family homes with an average value of $210,000 each. The financial analysis shows a positive cash flow over a five-year period. The net revenue over that five-year period is $4,768,838. One point that I wanted to point out to the council is that this area will be right near the limits of our five-mile distance from the nearest fire station, and so that's something that we'll have to pay attention to. You know, we anticipate that things like the extension of Jacksonville Parkway will end up, you know, helping us with that travel distance to this particular location. But in addition to that, we can in fact consider mutual aid agreements or automatic aid agreements with Volunteer Fire Department, Pumpkin Center, and that. So we'll just have to pay attention to that as the subdivision develops, and we add additional satellite annexation areas. We have a number in this area now, and obviously, this is a future growth area for the city. We just have to pay attention to our ability to support the needs of the community. But staff recommends that council adopt the annexation ordinance as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Massey. At this time, we'll open a public hearing on this matter. Does anyone present wish to speak to this voluntary annexation? Please raise your hand. CNNO1 will close the public hearing. Council, you've been asked to consider the annexation.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the annexation ordinance.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Here are not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We'll go down to number seven. This is a legislative map amendment, rezoning, and this is from residential, single-family seven to corridor commercial, and this is Wilmington Highway. And Jeremy Smith, our senior planner, will be presenting this item. Jeremy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This is a rezoning request submitted by Jennifer Autry Black and Jeremy Autry Lucci. They are the owners of Autry's Mini Storage on Wilmington Highway. It's been a mainstay in Jacksonville area for years. This rezoning is part of property they have acquired. It is currently zoned residential, single-family 20. It's approximately 2.4 acres. Again, it's located near their existing facility. It is bordered to the south by property zoned residential multifamily, used for single-family and an existing mobile home park. To the north is property zoned RSF 20 and corridor commercial, and then properties along Wilmington Highway, home of Autry's Mini Storage, are zoned corridor commercial. This is what the map would look like if the request was approved by city council, changing it to CC. This is the Camelane Use Plan. This identifies the property as neighborhood commercial. Therefore, the proposed rezoning is supported by the Camelane Use Plan. Properties to the south are identified as high-density residential and their existing uses fall within that suit, and the existing Autry's Mini Storage is also identified as neighborhood commercial. For your more of the location is the aerial map before you. Representatives from Tidewater and Associates, the applicant's design professional, who submitted this application for them, are in attendance. And with that being said, staff and the planning advisory board have recommended approval of this request, with findings of fact A through J being found in the affirmative and that the rezoning advances the public interest by creating more development opportunities. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Counsel, any questions? Jeremy?
Thank you. Thank you.
At this time, we'll assess the regular meeting and open up the public hearing on this matter. Anyone present wish to speak? CNNO1 will close the public hearing. Counsel, you're being asked to consider the map amendment.
Mr. Mayor, I guess nobody's speaking up. I'll make the motion to approve the rezoning based on the findings of facts A through J being found in the affirmative and that this rezoning will advance the public interest by creating more development opportunities.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here are not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Takes down number eight. This is another map amendment, and this is rezoning from residential multifamily, high-density to office and institutional on Commerce Road, and Jeremy will be presenting this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is another rezoning request for two parcels of land located on the new Commerce Road extension. They together, they combined to make 3.52 acres. This application was submitted by Sherri T. Bevel and Rhonda Walker. Properties to the south are zoned residential, single-family seven, in use for single-family. Properties to the west are zoned O and I and undeveloped. This request is to rezone this property to O and I, so it would match up with those to the west. Residual parcels across the street, when I say residual, they're a result of the road right-of-way dedication, are zoned residential multifamily and industrial, but that is where Sport Durst Automotive Group is. I believe it's Parkway Volkswagen and a couple of other car lots there. And then further down towards the Country Club Acres area is zoned residential, single-family seven. Before you're on the screen is what the map would look like if this rezoning were to be approved to O and I. The Camelane Use supports an O and I zoning as it identifies the property as regional commercial. The O and I zoning is not nearly as intense as regional commercial identifies it to be, so therefore, it falls within that allowance. Properties to the south are identified as low-density residential as they are being used for single-family. Before you're on the screen is aerial photography showing you that the property is currently undeveloped, as are the properties to the west and some of the properties across Commerce Road extension to the north. With that being said, Mr. John Pierce, with John Pierce and Associates is representing the applicant. Staff and the planning advisory board have recommended approval of this request, with findings of fact A through J being found in the affirmative, and that this rezoning advances the public interest by creating more development opportunities. I'll be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Motion, counsel.
Just a quick question. Any negative from any of the property owners adjacent?
No, sir. We had signs posted, and adjacent property owner notices went out. I think with the access, I think it's one of those, this is probably the best and highest use of the property.
Pretty consistent with what's around it.
I believe so, yes, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you. At this time, we'll reassess the regular meeting, open a public hearing on this matter. Mr. Pierce, did you want to say anything?
I think Jeremy did a good job explaining it. I think that this will be a positive because it does develop a lot more development opportunities in the property that's ahead back at him. I'm working with some plans to, that would end up being a fairly nice project, and it would help increase the tax base. I don't know if anybody, since we've been out serving, has complained at all. I've not heard any complaints, but I'll be here to answer any questions that mayor or the council may have. Thank you all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wish to speak to this matter? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, you're being asked to consider the map amendment.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the rezoning request based on the findings of facts A through J being found in the affirmative and that will advance the public interest by creating greater development opportunities.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here are not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Go down to non-consent item number nine. This is a Great Trails State Program grant application approval, and Susan will aptly be telling us about this.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much. I am before you tonight to get your approval consideration for a grant application for a Great Trails State Grant Program. As you all are aware, we had a successful year of the trail last year, and this is a takeoff from that. The state has allocated 25 million in non-recurring, and so there is a grant application out there, and so we would like to come before you and ask for permission to apply for a grant for Northeast Creek Park. It has been identified in our master plan as well as our current CIPs for Northeast Creek Park on the playground side. As you know, the playground side has been identified. We've done some great improvements, and we're going to finish that project. We've done a splash pad, a wonderful playground, some great renovations to the shelter and restrooms, but we're going to finish it with a walking trail and shade structures, which we do get a lot of requests for because of the splash pad. It has a ton of use in the summertime, which we'll keep open through the month of September. But we're going to do a really nice connectivity to all of the inner amenities to the park. It was suggested in our master plan that we do have that connectivity and keep promoting that wellness aspect in our park. So this trail is about a half a mile long. It goes throughout. We will also do a sidewalk connecting the playground, the splash pad, along with the shade structures that we'll put up. And as you can see, we're calling for about three shade structures throughout. This is a map. It's a pretty simple concept, but a very nice walking trail throughout, and then you can see that sidewalk going down the middle connecting the shade structures. It's a beautiful park, and so we've already had some nice layout on this sidewalk to disturb as little of the nature and to kind of meander through the trees, but we think it's going to be a really nice opportunity for our citizens. This is the breakdown. We're going to do a lot of this in-house. Michael and Parks Department is going to do a lot of it with their knowledge. As you all are aware, they're good at what they do. But this is the breakdown. The nice thing on this grant is that we are considered a, we're a one-to-four match on this. We are able to only put in a quarter of that request. So the project is about 200, and the request is from us on the match is about 50,000. We do have it in our current CIP. It is considered an active project, so we've been working on this project at Northeast Creek for several years. I think the project itself is from 2017, and once we finish this, we can close the book on this project on that side and focus on the great things that are planned for the other side of the park. So my request tonight, if you don't mind, is to get your approval to just move forward with this grant application, and then obviously, we would come before you, if we receive the grant, we'll come before you to get approval to accept the grant.
Questions?
Any questions? I'm happy to answer.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, we're asking for approval to accept the grant or to request the grant.
Mayor Phillips, I make the motion for council to authorize staff to submit the grant application as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here are not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Next, we have item number 10. This is the Carolina State Side Development Update, and I've seen Mark McPulskie was here.
Swear of record, Mark McPulskie, on behalf of Carolina Statewide Development, 166 Center Street, Jacksonville. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm excited to be here this evening to give you all an update on the affordable housing project, which we've been working on for three years. You might remember, we first submitted this project in 2022, and it wasn't funded. We submitted it again last year. It wasn't funded, and we submitted it back in January. And last Wednesday, the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency announced their funding awards, and our project was funded this year. So this is the 72 units over in Jacksonville Commons. So we just wanted to come down. So we just wanted to come down to the meeting and give you an update on our timeline and, and thank you for your support with this year's submittal. Uh, with your assistance, the application, uh, made a significant difference in this being a viable project and ultimately getting funded this year. In addition to the, uh, $200,000 CDPG loan from the city, the land contribution, which recently appraised for $618,000, greatly contributed to getting this, uh, funding award this year. So a new criteria with this year, awarded points for applicants that were able to leverage outside funding. So the CDPG loan really helped us get into this position to be funded while the diminished land costs helped the overall project feasibility. This will be our fourth affordable housing development in Jacksonville since 2018, and that equates to 280 units, uh, of units that will remain affordable for at least 30 years. We've already started the next phase in the development process, which includes finalizing the project design, architect plans, engineering plans, permitting, and the environmental review process. We expect to have that all wrapped up and be able to be, begin construction by early spring. And then the project, uh, would be ready to be placed in service by October 2026. The community will look a lot like the one we completed earlier this year down on Blue Creek School Road, which is Crestfield Point, similar building types and configuration. The agenda item, uh, has a pretty good summary of, of the scope of the project. I'm happy to answer any questions or go through those project details if you'd like. But again, we just want to thank you for what the city brought to our proposal this year to, to get to the point where we're at and getting funded. And generally, just appreciate your support of expanding affordable housing opportunities in our community.
Any questions or comments to Mark?
Congratulations on getting the funding. That was a journey.
It was. It was. But oddly, that was only three years. We also got another project funded that, it was the 50-year's middle, so we're not, we're not quitters. And it's a, it's a challenging competitive process, so we appreciate you hanging in there with us.
Appreciate you stepping up and your company stepping up and trying to do something about the housing shortage that we do have here.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, we thank you for what you're doing. Uh, how much land is left over there now?
It's about 12 acres. There's enough, there was enough land originally for three projects. Uh, I don't think you have that slide, do you? So at least 11 acres. Yes.
And Mayor, you'll see some of that when DFI gives us their presentation. You're going to see that overall breakdown because this is one of the sites that we talked about in terms of our overall inventory. And so seeing this project now, instead of having the land, we're going to have 72 units and we're going to have land. So I think we're going to have, uh, the best of both worlds in that area, so we'll have some other opportunities that council will be able to look at.
Yeah, I, I once did a layout for the entire track, and it was three projects. On the remaining land, you could fit about 72 units of a, uh, a senior, senior living building, single building. And on the other remaining track, probably about 80 to 84 units of family or whatever you choose to do, but still good, good amount of land for two more projects.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, sir.
All right, with that, we'll go to our reports, and I'll start with Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the only thing I want to bring up, you know, we're dealing with hurricane season. And we've, I've had questions about if it comes down to evacuating. I think about Georgetown because there's only one way in, one way out, trying to figure out and actually let our citizens know ahead of time what they should do in case, you know, we need to evacuate or who will come in the area, um, if it starts flooding in that area. So I think that's just something general that we need to know going forward.
Mayor, part of that process, what we've worked on for the last two tropical storms now, I think we've increased our partnership with the county and their EOC and then the EOC at the base as well. So when, when the mayor enacts the declaration of emergency and we activate our EOC, Lisa Miller and her team communicate through the county, and we start disseminating that information, that looks like evacuation routes, that, uh, information about what to do if you're going to stay in place. It also includes shelters, and it includes, um, any other type of restrictions that we may have. So part of that is, the first round of information is going to be simply, this is what we're experiencing right now, and this is how you plan for this type of event. The second step goes into specific areas that you may have, trouble areas that we know. We will target information to those areas. A lot of that's going to be social media, some of that's going to be phone calls. You're going to have to see the information. So part of it is sharing information when we don't have any type of issue, because for some of the instances, when we lose that capability to send out information, we still have radio backup, we still have that option, we still have the TV for a little bit, but it's getting that information out during the non-storm events so that people are aware. So both the county and the city have some of that information online. For Georgetown specific, remember this year, we changed that emergency secondary access for the trail that would come off of, uh, off Georgetown and then go over towards the back of the park. And so that has emergency bollards, so where you're asking information of who would come in, where our public services crew would go in, remove the bollards, traffic can exit out that way. If the bend had some issues where you couldn't pass, that would help get traffic out. Uh, but you will really have to look at those target areas for high water. One of the things that, that River Milton pointed out is the work that the crews did prior to what I would say is storm season this year, it was very effective for this tropical storm. We didn't see some of the things that we saw in last year's tropical storm, so some of the work is showing positive, just like the work downtown on New Bridge. That's why we're doing those stormwater improvements is so that we don't have flooding after the project's done. So even though there's a lot of pains in this process, we need to do some of that work, and we need to maintain that work to make sure that it works. So it's about dissemination of information now, especially if you know people that have some concerns. We just need to make sure they get that information prior to something else happening. It's a great point.
Thank you. That's all.
No report.
Um, I was just going to say something that Mayor Proton, not being able to be with us tonight, he had an accident, and, uh, he's still recovering from that, and, uh, we wish him all a speedy recovery and wish him well. Dr. Washington?
No report, sir. No report, sir.
I just, uh, I attended the groundbreaking for the bathroom facilities at the, uh, Le June Memorial Gardens, a much-needed project. Um, you know, we were throwing out some words like, you know, public-private partnership and working together, and the county and the city all working together, but really, this is, uh, bathrooms that we needed. And, um, if you need a bathroom, you need a bathroom, and we got, we got some finally. So, uh, the TDA has, has supported that, just so y'all know. I know, I know you've been, just remind you of that. And, uh, and this will be a, hopefully a nice addition to what's, uh, going to be a very nice park, especially when the museum gets finished. So thank you for that. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll, I'll go on to what Mr. Warden was talking about. The partnerships matter so much for us to have success. Uh, as we go into the one-city moment, a couple of the actions that council took tonight really focused on some of those target areas, housing needs. You're looking at multiple housing projects effectively on tonight's agenda, not just what, uh, what Mark just presented to us that showed those units, but also on new units that we're doing in a totally different area that may not have been a project that's been in the works for three years where the city would have as active as a role. But without all three of those partners, we can't be effective in satisfying the needs of our 72,000-plus citizens. So I, I just go back to credit to our partners for stepping up and being excited to lead the way here in the community and allowing the city to support them in their efforts. I, I promise you, we wouldn't get there without those partnerships. Mayor, we do have a couple items that I wanted to draw some attention to. Uh, this first one is, is incredible. You're going to see this picture here in front of you. Chief Tomlin had nothing to do with what I'm talking about, but the other three really did. You see City of Jacksonville Detective Jason Miller, and you see City of Jacksonville Citizens Karen Garcia and Michelle Reed. These three participated, they worked together to save a life. There was a burning building here in the city, a house, and, um, Ms. Garcia and Ms. Reed went into the house to rescue their neighbor. They saw smoke coming out, they knew that the neighbor wasn't outside. Um, Detective Jason Miller drove by, thank heavens, and he went in, saw the ladies run into the house. He went in, had the ladies leave the house. He continued on in his way, and he rescued the, uh, the individual out of the house. And if you recognize here, he's not a trained fireman. He is a police detective, so running into burning buildings is not something he's ever been trained in. But what he is trained in is public service and being a good citizen. So when we talk about our one-city initiative of what you do to take care of your citizens and your fellow neighbors, these three, uh, they showed that, that just amazing action, right? It's not just, it's not just bravado. It's something that shows that they understood the action, and it was very important that they went in there and, uh, they risked their, risked their own lives to take care of somebody else. I think that's incredible. For that, Detective Miller received a Medal of Valor, and the two citizens, Ms. Garcia and Ms. Reed, they received certificates from Chief Tomlin in appreciation of their efforts. Uh, hopefully, this is something that people will remember forever when they tell their stories, because it's not something that happens every day, and it's truly special in our community to see our individuals step up. So awesome for them. If you see them, just thank them for the work. And the other thing is what Mr. Warden was talking about. This is the third project that has taken over 20 years to come to fruition, and breaking ground has, I, I don't think it's ever meant so much in this community. This is the restroom facility at our Memorial Gardens. And so there's a, a group of people here that are moving dirt that has been sitting there for 20 years. Fernando's here, gets, he got a shovel, and he's getting to throw some dirt because I think he's been working on that project for about that amount of time. Um, it's an awesome project. It is simple, but once again, it takes the partnerships. It takes the base, it takes the city, it takes the county, and it takes the citizen group that is finding a way to make this happen. And I know for that group, they are overwhelmingly excited because it's going to be a welcome addition to our Memorial Gardens. Memorial Gardens are a amazing place for us, not just to appreciate those that serve, but as a community, it is who we are. It's, it's being a host community. And as Mr. Warden said, when you need a restroom, you need a restroom. So if it takes 20 years to get the museum of the Marine, it also takes 20 years to get a restroom for everybody else that can't go into there. Uh, these are great projects, Mayor. They're something that show community support, and it's going to make us better each and every day to have these projects. So, uh, those two things hand in hand show how active our community is. And my last comment is, Mayor, although we're working with some of our partners to make some improvements, we have, we have a ways to go. So we just got to keep working and putting forth the effort, uh, just like the people on the screen here. You keep pushing so that we can, we can be better, and we'll, we'll do better. Thanks, Mayor.
Just, uh, you know, without, without the veterans groups in this, in this particular instance, uh, the walkers with their vision for the Le June Memorial Gardens, none of that would have been possible. And, um, we as a city really just are, are kind of a behind-the-scenes partner in this, in this effort. Uh, it's really the citizens of Jacksonville and Alzo County that, that really made this happen, and we thank you for that.
Mr. Carter?
Yes, sir. I thank you. I've made Mayor and council and the TDA aware, but I'd like to make the listening public aware that next Monday at 12:30 in the old courthouse, Superior Court Room, there'll be a portrait unveiling for Ernie Wright. Mr. Wright, a former county commissioner, a former member of the TDA, uh, a former chairman of the redistricting committee, and the list goes on and on. But, uh, a, it's just something well-deserved by him, and I'm sure anyone would love to come. Marsha and, uh, his former law partner, Thomas Seem, have been actively involved, and I have to give kudos and thank you for allowing Lisa and I, Lisa Miller, to work with them to make this happen. But, uh, I hope we'll see some of you there. But it's at 12:30 in the old courthouse on Monday, August 26th. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Right, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.